Good evening and welcome to the 2019 Southern Shores Candidate Forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters, Dare County. I'm Andrea Scholar and I'm the coordinator of tonight's event. I'd like to begin by thanking our four candidates for participating in this. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters members who are here to help us run the forum, help the forum run smoothly, and thank you to all of you for being here and participating in this event. The League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 by Carrie Chapman Cat just six months after the ratification of the 19th Amendment that gave women the right to vote in the From its inception, the League has maintained a proud tradition of bringing candidates and voters together in our forums. During 2020, the Dare County League will be celebrating its 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters through a series of events including movies, lectures, panel discussions, and social events. Please stay tuned so that you can participate. It's now my pleasure to introduce tonight's moderator, Colleen Almany.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening. I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Dare County and I live in Kill Devil Hills. The League is comprised of women and men and are a nonprofit, nonpartisan political organization. It encourages informed and active participation in all levels of government, works to increase understanding of major public policy and issues, and influences public policy through the education and advocacy. I'm gonna try to make that sweet go away. The League maintains a nonpartisan policy. It neither endorses nor opposes any political party or candidate. The League participates in the positive campaign project and has requested that each candidate take the code of campaign ethics. We good? All right.
Already read it.
We prohibit campaigning and campaign literature in the forum room. All cell phones and electronic devices should be turned off. Texting is prohibited. We have a few League members participating tonight helping to keep the show running and I'd like to introduce them. Our two greeters and card runners are Carol Butcher and Susan Merrill. They're in the back. Our question reviewers this evening are Judy Lotus, Colleen Oakesmith, and Nancy Bearden-Daly over here. And keeping time this evening are Sunny Shay and Tom Burbach right up front. We encourage a lively and respectful discussion. If you think of a question during the forum, please raise your hand. Either Carol or Sunny will hand you a blank card or collect a card that you have already completed. You can do that throughout the forum. There are three council seats up for this election and there are four candidates running. They are Leo Holland, Elizabeth Morley, Matt Neal, and Fred Newberry. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Each candidate will have three minutes for an opening statement. The timekeeper will sign her when the candidate has 30 seconds remaining and when time is up, she will stand if the candidate continues past the allotted time. Please don't make her stand up. Next, candidates will respond to questions from the audience. Voters are asked to submit questions legibly written, please, please write legibly, legibly written with their signatures and town of residence. Questions may be addressed to a specific candidate or all candidates. League members will review the questions for clarity, relevance, and to avoid duplication. We believe this procedure affords the greatest variety of subjects to be covered in the allotted amount of time. Questioners will be asked to step to the podium and read their question as it is written without further comment. The questioner will then be seated and the moderator will continue to preside. The League advocates positive campaign practices and we reserve the right to omit any question that is viewed as a personal attack or unrelated to campaign issues. Opportunities will not be extended to candidates who initially pass on a question. Finally, each candidate is entitled to a two-minute closing statement. Before we started, candidates drew numbers to establish the order of their opening statements and we will reverse that order for the closing statements. All the candidates have asked to be referred to by their first names, but for this purpose only, we'll go ahead and get started for the close opening statement from Matt Neal.
Always pays to be first. Good evening. I thank you all for your attendance tonight. One of the many aspects of this town that make it such a wonderful place to be is the civic engagement of its residents and this audience certainly is evidence of that. Also like to thank Colleen and League of Women's Voters for arranging this for us. Many of you may not know me personally and I'd like to take a moment to introduce myself. I'm 36 years old, a third-generation resident, and a father to two young children, Benjamin who is five and Anna who is three, both who attend school within the town. My wife Rachel is somewhere in the crowd and I run a design-build-contracting firm, Neal Contracting. I have been an active member of the Outer Banks Home Builders Association, serving on the Board of Directors since 2016 and as president for the last two years. For the last several years, I've advocated for smart zoning policies for the town at both planning board and council meetings. This advocacy has included public comment as well as meeting independently with decision-makers. My background as a builder has proved to be indispensable in understanding the nuances of our town ordinances and effectively articulating their potential impacts. Further, my family history with the town that reaches back to my early childhood has played a pivotal role in informing the mindset by which I approach these development issues. I am never hesitant to speak my mind and I favor research over opinion. Keeping an open mind is essential to governing and best policies often reach through consensus. I do not shy away from challenging topics and relish the opportunity to dive deep into issues that appear complex. I have a vision for our town that many of you share, but it's not so rigid that a compelling argument won't convince me to adapt. It is this spirit of open-mindedness, excuse me, it's squeaking, and technical curiosity tempered by our generational history in our town that I will bring with me to council. We all share different viewpoints and mutual respect will be my central tenet. Finally, as we approach issues in the coming year, many of them requiring significant cost outlays, I sincerely desire to continue the firm financial foundation that we as a council will inherit. Our reserve capital far exceeds the state mandated limits by more than a factor of five and yet we still enjoy lower taxes than the majority of our neighboring towns. So rarely can this be said of a governing body these days. Our financial history will need to be our guidepost as we move forward on long-term municipal spending. I am impacted personally and professionally by policies adopted by the town. It is my desire to be a voice in those policies as they shape both my family's future and yours. I welcome any questions so that all of you may know me a bit better. Thank you for your audience and I truly hope that you will support me in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Next up is Elizabeth Morley. Morley, sorry. Oh gosh, sorry.
Yeah, that's why Elizabeth is fine. I just want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this forum together, for inviting all of the candidates to be here, for coordinating our schedules so that we could all be here together. Thank you very much. I know that was not an easy task. I want to say thank you to all my neighbors out here. As Matt just said, this is a sure sign that you guys care about where you live. You care about the town, you care about what goes on in the town, and it's just great to see. Thank you for coming. There would have been lots of other things that you could have done tonight. I'm running for council because I'm passionate about protecting and enhancing this unique quality of life that we enjoy here in Southern Shores. I'm committed to ensuring that our community is a, remains a premier place to live, visit, work, raise a family, invest, and just be. I also will fight to make sure our tax dollars are spent wisely. But let me tell you just a little bit about me. My husband Tommy and I have been visiting the Outer Banks as many of you all did for years before we bought property. We bought our lot in 2000, we built our home and moved in in 2004. So I've lived and worked here for about 16 years. We moved here from Raleigh. My work history includes both private sector job experiences and public sector. Here in Dare County, I worked for the Dare County Health Department. I worked in onsite wastewater systems, which gave me some experience with both commercial and residential building. So not as good as him, but I do know, I do know my way around a job site. Some of you might recognize my name. I have been a, I've served on the Southern Shores Planning Board for eight years. I took over as chair in January. When I first got on the planning board, it was kind of a sleepy snooze fest of a group. The last couple of years, needless to say, have not been anything like that. We've tackled some pretty tough issues, some pretty complicated issues. We've done the best we can and again, on the planning board, I work with four other folks. Sometimes we don't agree, but we always are able to speak with each other. I would like to run to increase the collegiality and sense of common purpose. I think that I am a thoughtful and fair-minded person and I will seek to build consensus and finding the best solutions to our problems. And I ask you to please consider voting for me when you either vote in early voting or on Tuesday, November 5th. Thanks.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next up, Leo Holland.
Good evening. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for conducting this forum. My name's Leo Holland and I live at 23 Spindrift Trail with my wife, Mary Ellen. We moved to Southern Shores in August of 2001. We have two children and three grandchildren. Now I'm gonna tell you a little bit about where I'm coming, where I come from and it gives you an idea of how I react. I grew up in northwest Illinois on a grain and beef farm, graduated from Scales Mountain High School, a graduate of the University of Wisconsin at Blattville, Wisconsin with a bachelor of science degree in agriculture education and a concentration in economics. I joined John Deere Construction Forest Division and retired after 39 years of service in January of 2002. Held a number of positions in sales, dealer, accounting, finance, and product support. Then I became, after I retired, I became a consultant for James River Equipment, one of Deere's largest dealers, and developed their safety program and managed their workman's compensation program as well as their training program at Deere. I was an advisor on the Wake Tech Community College Technical Board for three years. I'm an honorary member of the Associated Equipment Management Professionals. I retired from James River Equipment this past December. Mary Ellen and I have lived in Dubuque, Iowa, Atlanta, Georgia, Baltimore, Maryland, and Cary, North Carolina, and now here in Southern Shores. While I was in Maryland, I was a member of the Jacksonville Optimist Club, Baltimore County 4-H Leader, Treasurer of the Baltimore County Fair Board. After moving here, I became involved in the Southern Shore Civic Association and served as membership chairman, vice president twice, president, served as social commodore of the Southern Shore's Vote Club for two years, elected to the Check property owner's association, served as vice president and president. I also served as Alder of the Board of Adjustments and Planning Board. I was elected to town council in 2013 and served for four years. During that period, I represented the town on the Dare County Tourism Board and acted as assistant treasurer and assistant chairman. I'm currently involved with the local Knights of Columbus as well as State of North Carolina Knights of Columbus, and that's my experience.
Thank you very much. And next up is Fred Newberry.
I would also like to thank the League of Women Voters for allowing us this opportunity and most importantly, I really appreciate the great turnout we've had tonight. I've met many of you through my door-to-door campaigning. I got a little ways to go, so if I haven't come to your house yet, be ready, I'm coming. Or my wife Debbie, she's helping me do that too. But I've really enjoyed discussing various concerns about the town with you. I'm looking forward to meeting more of you tonight after the meeting and I'm certainly looking forward to working with some of your, answering some of your questions. I currently serve on the town council and I'm running for reelection. I would like to continue serving the residents of Southern Shores and tonight I'll provide some of my plans for the next four years. I'm not gonna bore you with my education and all of that. I feel like you can go on my website and there's a lot of, a lot of reading there. You can see some of my background. First of all, I want to say I've been a part of the Southern Shores community since the year 2000 when my wife and I bought our first home. I want to be progressive and guide the town into the future while maintaining the ambiance and the small-town character of Southern Shores. We need well-thought-out, long-range budgets and plans, but we don't want any increases in taxes or reducing our undesignedated fund or our emergency reserves. Careful planning and supporting budgets are key. Also, your input will be important and we will all be required to work together to evaluate and prioritize the town's projects. Another key initiative involves addressing the seasonal cut-through traffic and aggressively seeking solutions that reduce it, but minimize the convenience of our residents. We welcome visitors to our town, but those cutting through in the summer are not spending time here but are traveling north to Duck, Corolla, and the four-wheel-drive area. In addition, they're bypassing our commercial district and spending money elsewhere. Even our seasonal renters find cut-through traffic a problem. I want to involve you, the citizens, on other key issues and I need your input. As most of you have indicated, and I agree, we do not favor many hotels or large houses in residential areas, but we do welcome development that complements our town and contributes to us maintaining and increasing property values. However, thank you very much. Look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Fred Newberry. And if y'all don't mind, I'm gonna, just a stitch and see if we can keep that up. Now we will begin to take questions from the audience. I will call two people to the podium for the first and second questions. After each question, I will call another, so the next questioner will be ready. Our first questioner is Tony Radonsky and our second question will be asked by Jerry Sullivan.
It's like getting up to accept an award. Are you Jerry? Okay, there you go. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My question is, list in order the three top most important priorities for the residents of Southern Shores.
First up is Fred.
I was last, last time. The priorities I think that are most important, starting with better money management. I think all of us agree that we don't want to raise taxes. We need to have good planning, long-range planning. We need to have budgets to support that. And so better money management, I think, is my top priority. My second priority is doing something about this cut-through traffic. I have talked to a lot of you this weekend, the weekend before, and even during the week, and all through the various month, previous months, and I think people are tired of it. They're fed up. They want the council to do something. And so I sponsored a formation of a citizens committee, not a council committee, but the citizens to come forward with their recommendations and hopefully they'll come in December and give us some good recommendations we can consider. And my third most important thing is your input. I value it, I need it, I want to represent you, not necessarily my thoughts and beliefs, but what you, the people, want. And so those are my top three priorities.
Thank you. Next, Elizabeth.
I've been knocking on doors and talking to people for the last couple of weeks and one thing I've heard that's a repeated theme is almost everyone I speak to really likes where they live and, you know, whether they live over on the Soundside or in the dunes or in the woods. Everybody that I spoke with has really spoken highly of, we really like where we live. That tells me that we kind of like the way things are. So it's protection and enhancement of the place that we live in. That's, that's my number one priority. Secondly, I'd like to think I could work towards having a better relationship between council members, better communication, because I think if we, if we tackle problems in a collegial fashion with give and take, we can exchange ideas and we can come up with better solutions to the problems that we face. I also think that we need to improve the communication between the council and the people who live here. I think, I think that, those are my three things.
Thank you. Next up is Leo.
My three priorities, I think, for the town is, of course, we just heard a little bit about it, is the traffic issue. That's the first one I think we need to deal with because it impacts a lot of people. Secondly, the other one is beach nourishment. That's something we gotta look at, our beaches, and that's why people come here for the most part. And the other is the onboarding of a new town manager. Those are three issues I think we need to address that will have an impact on everybody here in the town.
Thank you. Matt?
The three issues that have come up when I'm walking around town and meeting some of you for the first time, I think initially the first comment is about what's happening in the town development-wise, what's happening with the large homes that are being developed, what's happening with stormwater impacts, what's happening with small lot development. That tends to be one of the first topics of discussion, not necessarily the highest priority, but it definitely comes up. And beyond that, the biggest question also is traffic. I mean, this is an ongoing thing that's been going on. It's been going on since I was a teenager. I used to drive, crawl, pizza, try to get to work when I was a kid. It's a topic then, it's a topic now, and I think it'll be a topic for a little bit of the future. It's certainly something that needs to be discussed and we need to look at it from a technical base so we can move forward. The last thing that I think, among other people, there's a lot of improvements going on town. There's street rebuilding, there's sidewalks being built, there's discussion about beach nourishment, and it kind of dovetails a little bit with what Fred said about, you know, people are a little bit uncertain of how all that's gonna be paid for and I think there are answers for some of that and it's just a matter of education. But those are the three, not necessarily in that order, but that's the priorities that most of y'all are telling me when I knock on your door and I hear from you. So we're here to listen and we want to solve these issues.
Thank you, Matt. Next, we'll hear from Jerry Sullivan and Jim Watkins. You're on deck.
Thank you. Our town is considering approving a $14 million beach nourishment project, even though several experts from Duck Pier questioned the data on which it was proposed. Where do you stand on beach nourishment and how do you think our town should proceed?
Leo?
Well, I'm a proponent of it, but I think we have to ask ourselves two questions when we're considering beach nourishment. And the first, the first one is, do we consider our beach an asset or a liability? And if it's a liability, you don't do anything with it. But the other question that needs to be asked is, why do tourists or guests come here? That's because of our beaches. And I look at the beach as being a revenue-generating item for, not only the town, but for, for the county. So we need to figure out how we want to fund it. It's not a cheap project. There's various ways it can be done, but I think we need to protect our beaches. We did a portion of it down here at Pelican's Watch that, which worked, or is working, and there's areas of our beach that needs attention, but if we neglect it, I have a feeling our guests will no longer be, come here to our town.
Thank you. Again, Jim Watkins, you're on deck if you can come up. Matt, you're next.
Beach nourishment is a tough issue for me because I'm a-
Thank you. Sorry.
Good evening, gosh. Oh, hold on. No, no, not yet.
Sorry, Matt. Go ahead.
Let me get my thoughts together. Beach nourishment is a tough issue for me personally. I like our coarse sand, I like our steep slope of our beach, I like the natural contour of our beach. And to me, you know, like many of you, it's nice to preserve it the way it is. The challenge with that is we decided to hold our shoreline in 1963 when we built the dune. We've created that beach. What we think of as a natural item is actually an artificial beach that we've already impacted. And the people that was mentioned in the question from Duck Research Pier, they actually think the beach nourishment is a proactive choice for the town. What they are commenting on was some of the methodology used by AFTM. And there's legitimate questions with that methodology, both about the seasonal times that AFTM took their beach nourishment study and whether or not they should take it in the winter and then follow up the next winter, or they should follow it in the May and whether or not seasonal variability came into play. But I think ultimately, they see holding our shoreline, especially on the northern complex barrier island that is Southern Shores, as a proactive step in maintaining our town. My issue with it is the cost. It should be the issue for everybody here. It's $14 million. There are different financing models we can follow. None of them are gonna be cheap. And we need to discuss with our consultant and with perhaps outside observation from the research pier, how best to interpret the knowledge that comes from AFTM. But I would reiterate, we've already held our beach with our dune system. Ash Wednesday knocked out the first flat tops around the oceanfront and we learned, we said, we have to do something here. I've watched that beach in front of 176 Ocean Boulevard retreat and come back. And one last thing before I run out of time, we are part of a county, Dare County, and we all share a shoreline. No one knows where those, the shoreline doesn't care what town we're in. When Duck nourishes and Kitty Hawk nourishes, we accrue their sand naturally. And to be good neighbors and good citizens of Dare County, we need to participate in a county-led project, I think. And my main issue is again, the cost and how we can afford it. And ultimately, if we can't afford it, maybe we punt, but we need to look at it. Thank you.
Fred?
Boy, Matt covered a lot of areas that I'm concerned about. Thank you, Matt. I agree, we need to have more data, more information before we can make what I consider an intelligent decision. We can't let emotion override clear thinking. We have a big expense ahead of us. It's in the neighborhood of 14 to 16 million. It could go higher than that, we don't know. But I believe in taking it on a case-by-case basis. The council, I think, did a good job working with the folks at Pelican Watch. That project initially started out about $600,000 to $700,000, but it ended up costing us over a million. Now granted, we got some help on that, but still, that's a lot of money and we've got to consider the cost. And no doubt, and I won't argue with anyone, that our beaches are the main attraction for visitors to Southern Shores, but at the same time, we're the people who've got to pay the bills, so we've got to make really good decisions and determine, one, how we're gonna finance it, and, and also, where's the money coming from? We figured on the back of an envelope, even if the county paid for half of the bill, we would still have over a five-year period, like a $1.3 or $4 million debt that we would have to service, but that's interest only. That doesn't include the principal. And there are other financial options, I'm sure. We've hired a consultant to advise us on those, but I'm not saying I'm against beach nourishment, but I think we need to have more information. We need more opinions, like from the Duck Research Pier. I'd like to hear more from them. They met with us on one council meeting and there was a lot of good information for us to think about, and so go from there.
Thank you. Next, Elizabeth.
So beach nourishment is a complicated issue, there's no doubt, and not all beaches are created equal. We're not Buxton, we're not Naxhead. On the other hand, I think one way you want, you might want to think about trying to decide, you know, go or no-go on this project is from the aspect of, what would happen if we don't do beach nourishment? So if we don't do beach nourishment with the county in 2022 or thereabouts, then you're looking at the next project not even getting off the ground until, say, 2027 or maybe 2029. So I think the, the idea that the Outer Banks is a migratory on geologic time, we're migrating to the west, we're going down into the west, sea levels are rising, storms are getting worse, and, and so in turn- So I think the idea that the Outer Banks is a migratory on geologic time, we're migrating to the west, we're going down into the west, sea levels are rising, storms are getting worse, and so in terms of, sometimes the best defense is a good offense, to use a sports analogy. In other words, we're not as bad off as some other beaches, but I think we need to look at it in terms of the window of opportunity. And if we're going to do this, the only way to do this is with money from the county. Because otherwise, we would just be silly. I mean, it would make no sense at all. So I think that's the key way to look at it, is not so much, you know, does the science tell us we need to do it, does the data tell us we need to do it? But whether, does it make sense to not do it at all? Because basically, that's what you're talking about. Either do it now, or you're doing it 10 years from now. That's the way I look at it, anyway. Thanks.
Thank you all so much. On deck is Greg Pensabine. Hopefully, I pronounced that right. Greg? Come on up. And I'm going to read Jim Watkins' question, because he asked me to, and I messed up. Is anyone willing to look at the deer problem and come up with solutions? There we go. Elizabeth, we'll start with you.
Thank you for that question. And thank you for letting me go first. We live in nature, we live in their backyard. And, you know, we chose to live here. They were here first.
I agree with that.
That's not to say they're not pests, because they can seriously be pests, as can rabbits, by the way, because sometimes I think, everybody talks about the deer eating their, the plants that they put out, but you know those plants that are about that off the ground? The rabbits get those guys, y'all. So I don't know, Jim, to answer, I don't know what I would tell you, other than, you know, love the deer, or hate the deer, but the deer are here.
Fred?
Well, Elizabeth stated it very well. They were here first, they really were, and I don't know, I kind of like them. I've gotten used to them. Every morning, I was commenting this morning, looked out the window, and this same deer comes by every morning, and goes down toward the sound and does whatever it does down there. And it's just a matter of life. And living in Southern Shores, we've got a lot of wildlife here. I mean, the raccoons play havoc with our trash cans, and we've got foxes and rabbits and paws. I don't, I don't know, I don't consider them as pests. I kind of enjoy having them. I don't know what you can do. I mean, we certainly can't open deer hunting season in Southern Shores. That's not going to work. So I hate to say it, we just kind of have to deal with it. Most people that I know have adapted. Some of them even put up high fences to keep them out of their shrubbery and all, but we just deal with them. I don't have a good answer. Thank you.
Matt, good luck.
Yeah. Where's Jim Watkins? He left. I'll loan you my three-year-old daughter, and she will take care of every deer in your yard. Because when she sees one coming to our yard, she storms out the back door and wholeheartedly chases them out. We do have a predator in our midst that will feast on these deer, and they're growing thicker and thicker. And I see them more and more every time. We've got a game cam in the backyard, I've got cameras in the back house, and about 7:30 every evening, about 2:00 AM every evening, they follow the same trail every day. And I'm talking about coyotes, of course, so there is going to be a point where the deer problem will go the way of Naxhead Woods, and they don't have a deer problem anymore, they have a coyote problem. And I don't think there's anything that we need to be concerned with yet in town, but it is something that we do need to monitor. It's a good question, but I don't really have a good answer.
Leo?
Well, when I first moved here, we got welcome to the deer quickly, because I found out where we built our house, that's where the deer were always going back and forth in. And then my wife put out some pansies, and one night, and the next morning, they were, it was gone, and she couldn't believe it. So it's a tough issue, I don't have an answer for it. You know, you're going to love them or hate them. I do a little of both. But I do use a product called Deer Scram, and it works. And I put it around my plants, and they leave them alone. Now, I do know the town that, where I, next to where I grew up, there in the Midwest, and of course, their deer population is a whole lot different than here. And so consequently, they have been working three years of how to go to try to eradicate it, because they go and come from the cornfields around us that surround the town. So they've been three years trying to figure out what they're going to do, and they still don't have an answer, and they think they ought to use a bow-and-heel type approach. I'm not in favor of that program, but like Matt, I think the coyotes are going to weigh in here somewhere on the population. Wish I had an answer, but I don't.
Thank you all for your awesome attempts. Let's see, next up is Rod McCaughy. And now we are going to hear from Greg Pensabine.
Good evening. How are you all? I was told I have to read the question I wrote down here, and the only problem with that is I can't read my own writing. So this is really directed more toward Mr. Newberry and Mr. Holland as incumbents. And we touched upon Mr. Newberry, the traffic issue. Why isn't the town council exercising its authority over Southern Shores roads to restrict cut-through traffic to allow Southern Shores residents to get in and out of Southern Shores when traffic clogs up on all roads on change over Saturday and Sunday? And I'll go off the script a little bit. I was shocked just the other night. I learned that Southern Shores has the authority, they own the roads, they have the authority, they could do something about it, but we're not. So I'd like to know why.
Since the question was for Leo and Fred, we'll start with Leo.
Well, I'm not, I'm an incumbent from about two years ago, coming in. It's a difficult, handling our road issue, it's a difficult, complex, and coming in and here, like, we tried the left-turn program. Well, you know, that is in the Kitty Hawk municipality, and you've got the NC DOT that you have to live with and work with. And, you know, we can do certain things within the town, but we also get some Pell grants that has an impact on that as well. I wish I had an answer. The research that I have done in other communities, they refer to that program as ratting, when they're cutting through. And one of the things they'll tell you is, try to make your streets unfriendly during that period of time. Now, how are you going to make them unfriendly? And you've got stop signs, and then you put some speed bumps in, then you put the calming ones every 250 feet. Well, that may slow the guests up, but it also inconveniences we as the residents. And also, we've got to consider, what's the police department and fire department? Because that will slow them up getting to an incident if they had to have it. One of the things I'd like to probably think is do, I'm waiting to see what our citizen committee comes up with, but we also may have to look at employing a traffic engineer to help us out. That's where I'm at on it. May not have answered the question directly, but I don't have an answer for it.
Thank you. Fred?
Well, I asked the same questions that was in the questioner's question. Why hasn't the council done anything? I don't know. I think it's inexcusable that we haven't addressed it properly. I think we should address it, and people have been complaining, they've been speaking up for many years, this is nothing new. And there are options, there are things we can do. Our streets are private, and we do get a little bit of state money with our Powell Fund, but it's not that significant. So there are things that we can do. I'm not going to go over all of them tonight by any means. That's why I sponsored a committee, a citizens committee, not council people, because obviously we haven't been able to solve the problem. I want to hear from the people, what they think. And this committee has been formed, and they're getting ready to start pulling their thoughts and research together. And at the December meeting, I'm hoping they're able to make recommendations for the council to consider. The no-left-turn was mentioned. I've heard some people say it was very successful, it really helped the people, especially up in the dune area. I know I went and sat at the Kitty Hawk School for a couple of hours and watched the traffic, and it was minimized, there was no doubt about it. But I don't argue with the numbers, and, but I think it's important that we do consider cut-through traffic. It's important to safety of a lot of people and to their enjoyment of life. And I'm very anxious to hear what the committee comes up with. And oh, by the way, these visitors are not stopping in Southern Shores, and they're not spending money in Southern Shores. They're going north of here, and it's even hurting our, some of our visitors that rent here. They don't want to rent here with all this traffic either. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, I'll give you a chance to chime in if you'd like.
Yep. I spoke at length with the police chief about this last week, and wherever the question is, I was, anyway. Through-traffic signs are similar to the curb signs that are yellow that say 45 mile an hour. It's a suggestion, it's not a legal action. And it's very difficult to actually enforce through-traffic guidelines, even if you own the streets. And as Fred said, we do take Powell bill money, which further complicates the issue. So what your next step is mechanically, is we would gate the town, and we would have pass codes and key cards. And we looked into that, or the council did prior, and it was a $1.2 million initial investment, $108,000 a month maintenance fee for managing the software in the gates. You had to employ gatehouse clerks. It was a financially untenable, and I think a physically untenable situation for the town, for all of us to have to pass through gates to go through our neighborhood. That doesn't negate traffic as a serious concern, but I hear this a lot, that we own the roads, we should be able to control them. It's a much more nuanced issue than that. And I just, that's why the council hasn't been able to do anything thus far. It is a very nuanced issue. DOT needs to be involved. I mean, I won't make a soapbox on that part right now, but wherever, that's, you know, you hear it a lot, and it's our roads, we should be able to control them. It all goes down to budget, costs, and what are you willing to sacrifice to control them? So that's my thought.
Thanks, Matt. Elizabeth, any thoughts?
I spent a fair amount of time talking to people on Sea Oats Trail and today, and man, the stories about the traffic were impressive. I live over on Gene Guy, and so if somebody's coming down that road that doesn't live, they're (beep), can't breathe, or (beep). Just a couple of ideas, and I do hope that the committee comes up with some ideas. The first idea was something I thought I heard Matt say, which is, you know, put those big DOT flashing signs out there at the base of the bridge that say, if you want to go to Duck, it takes 30 minutes if you go straight, it takes hour and 30 minutes if you turn left at the next left. You like that idea? Seriously, we could discourage people by just telling them the truth about how long it takes, because it does take longer if you turn left. You know, it really does. So that was one idea that I stole from him. The other idea, the, and the town did this, they sent, they sent a town manager to speak with the tourism board and to talk about our issue. We're the only town on the Outer Banks that has this issue. You don't hear Duck crying about it, you don't hear (inaudible). You know, we're it. So could we encourage somehow the tourism board to actively engage with cottage owners to increase the number of change-out days, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday? Could we incentivize it with some tourism money? Could we pay somebody to have a change-out day on Friday? Maybe have it on Fridays every third year? Something. I think we need to try to approach the problem in a more holistic fashion, but I do think we need to try to work at it with the fewest number of resources that we can, because we have some big budget items on the horizon. And thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you. On deck is Kevin "The Pebbets." Relatively close? Oh, thanks.
Hi, my name is Rod McCaughy, and I have a water question. Water as in stormwater runoff on our streets? Water as in the health of our canals in Currituck Sound? Water as in the health of the Southern Shores ponds? Do you see this as a serious issue? If yes, what should be done?
Fred?
Boy, my wife is going to give me a hard time on this one, I'm sure. She works for EPA, but seriously, that is something that is of critical importance. We live on the sound, and the mill weed has really contaminated in front of our house, and the odors it produces is unreal. And I'd hate to fall in that water, because I know it's probably at this point not safe. But to alleviate this problem, it's not an easy one, because there are a lot of environmental laws that prohibit us from doing a lot of things that we would like to do, and we think we could take care of the problem. But I think we should contact the state environmental services that are provided to us, and discuss it with them, and see really what are the remedies that we could possibly consider. I mean, going in there and poisoning our vegetation, that sort of thing is not the answer. There's got to be a more natural way of doing it. I don't have specific answers to it, but I do think we could get some facts, and we could get some people in to come talk to us. I'm sure the state would be more than happy to send some of their environmental people, part of Kamak, it's right over here in Elizabeth City, and I know we've talked to them several times, and there's a lot of information that could possibly help us. So that's kind of my take on it.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
Am I understanding the question, Rod? You want to talk about stormwater primarily? Kind of everything. Water, water everywhere. Water, water everywhere?
A little tough.
That's just one aspect.
Just one aspect? The stormwater problems, I'll talk about that first. Some of the bigger problems can be solved when we redo, when we do our street improvement projects, not solve, they can be ameliorated. We're never going to be able to solve all the stormwater problems, that's just a fact. There's, occasionally, there's just too much rain that falls in too short of a time. And because we live here with hard-surface streets and hard-surface roofs, all the water's going to run downhill to the same location. So, you know, you're going to have occasionally storms that create problems. But we can improve it. We've made, you know, some improvements during our street rebuilds. DOT has made some improvements, don't, I don't think they're done, I think there's more to be done. I don't know how to tackle the problem with the noxious weeds, other than look for a state grant that would, that would help us out. I'm not an expert on that issue at all, but I would look to try to get more data and try to talk to more people to make a good, informed decision.
Thank you. Matt?
To address water quality, because it's a simple, not the simple one, but the sound water, bacteria levels, and some of the mill weeds that Fred's talking about, I do think, as they both suggested, Department Environmental Quality can assist us in that. We need to make an active request and bring their experts here, and hear what they have to say, and get them to give us a proposal. And I'm certain that there is grant money available that the town can apply for. On a more direct impact that the town can handle on stormwater, this is much greater than a two-minute answer, and I'm only going to give you a snapshot. But stormwater is something that means so many different things. You have to have a design parameter to manage stormwater. In residential construction, it's inch-and-a-half rainfall. In some commercial construction, it's four inches of rainfall. Nobody has a design parameter for 10 inches of rainfall. We just don't have it. So we have to look at what design parameter are we going to target as a town? And most of it, most of the problem we see in the town is in the street conveyance symptoms. Most of the higher ground on the town can handle inch-and-a-half, three inches of rainfall within the soil of its own lot. Where we have an issue is the roof load coming off of our driveways, coming to our streets, and then the streets can't handle it. Now, going back to the ponds, there's some pretty interesting things that have been occurring in other parts of the, both in Currituck County and Dare County, they've been employing groundwater lowering devices. Now, these are either collection pipes, or cisterns, or pumps. And what they will do pre-storm is they will actively pump these systems down and drain the ponds, and provide collection holding pens within those ponds. That's an achievable thing, that's something that we can plan for. Problem is, it costs money. So we have to have that kind of, how much we want to invest in this. But there is an engineering solution for some of our stormwater issue with the ponds. And I think that that is low-hanging fruit for us to go after to manage it. The other thing is Kitty Hawk has a tremendous model for handling their bowl-like areas. I spoke to their town manager earlier today. A lot of people said, oh, the water has to sit for two hours, or two days, or it has to reach 10 inches before they can pump. to reach ten inches before they can pump. They pump the second the storm is left. They pump immediately. We can follow that model.
Thank you. Leo?
Well, I think there's two issues here. There's one to manage in the stormwater part of it, in which there's various options that we can do. One of the bigger problems you get if we have a wet year is the water table is high. And I kind of like this idea of maybe using some other engineering devices to try to lower that, where it can absorb it. Now, the quality of the water in our canals or our sounds, that's a different, whole different issue. And I think we need to solicit help from the state agencies that can help us out there. I think we've had, over time, the fragmentes have been a problem, or been Ginggut at one time or another. When I was in the SSCA, we had to try to deal with it. The solution that came up that time wasn't very good, because they were wanting to poison the grass. And that wasn't going to help the, help the life that lived around there. So it's something that was discussed at the special council meeting on the 17th of September. So it is reached into our, part of our long-range plan to look at what we can do. And we, again, no simple answer, and it's whatever we do is going to add some cost to it, so we're going to have to prioritize where we want to spend our budget money.
Thank you. On deck, I'm going to murder this, I'm so sorry. French Caldwell?
You didn't murder him.
I didn't? I was right? Oh, three cheers for me! No, I got nothing. Okay, Brad, you're up.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Recently, I've been noticing, every summer recently, there's students that come out here and young people to work. And we're starting to see, it's starting to disappear. It's getting harder and harder for them to come out, because of the housing issue, Airbnb, for example. There's raised, the rental rate's very high. And so I was wondering, this, we could lose a lot of help out here during summer. We've already seen it, like the Wine Fest, say, up there in Corolla. May be, may be an issue. So what we've seen, it's starting to, they're not coming out here anymore, they're getting less and less. Do you have a plan to work housing or help these people, these young people, to solve this problem?
Thank you.
This is a tough one.
The county's now calling it essential housing. It's no longer affordable housing. I think that's an appropriate term. It's essential housing. You notice some of the restaurants are closing more during the week. They're closed on Mondays and Tuesdays. It's a staffing issue. The owners are burned out. I think we have some restaurant owners in the crowd that can probably attest to that. For the town to address it, it's going to be something nobody wants to hear. It would be an increase in density. We would have to find zones where we can increase density and fit more bodies. Do people want to do that? I hear no. So I mean, that's the simple answer. The long answer is we can work with the county. We can develop an economic development corporation that actually has some teeth. We can find locations and parcels in other areas that can foster growth for this kind of essential housing that we so desperately need. But it's the same answer in every town, unfortunately. You have to look at your zoning, you have to look at density. I'm not particularly in favor of increasing our density to allow for essential housing. I would be willing to have the conversation if somebody approached me with a particular parcel and said, "This is the way this would work, and this is how it'd impact." And then we hear from everybody here on their feelings on it. But we market ourselves as a low-density residential community. That's what we all came here for, that's what we've all settled here for. Unfortunately, that ties our hands tremendously in solving this housing crisis. There are a couple of other things that could be done. The discussion of ADUs is low-hanging fruit, but I think that might, you know, you have to put restrictions so they don't all just immediately go into Airbnb market. So I mean, there's, none of this is simple, but the county's working on, and the town can take leadership in this and work with the county, to foster some kind of an economic development corporation that can actually tackle these issues holistically. We don't have it now, and we need it. Not a Southern Shores answer, but certainly a Dare County one.
Leo?
Well, the county is, I know is working very diligently on it, but there's a whole lot of things have to be looked at, and they're having to look at some of their building codes. I don't believe we need to have more, more houses here when we're talking about density. But we need to work with the county, and I think the chamber is also involved with it, of trying to figure out how these young people that come here can afford it, and then, you know, who's going to build it, and is it going to be an in-private situation that they build it? And if they do, they're wanting some type of return on their, on their investment as well. I don't think we'll, it's a long-term thing, we're going to have to figure it out, but I think we need to, as a municipality, we need to work with the county and work with them and see how all of us, because everybody's impacted by it. You go to, like now, you go to a restaurant, and they're, they're, they're short of help, because they're not here. And that's different than it was when I first moved here, because there was a lot of young students. Matter of fact, we were part of a pathways program that picked them up in Elizabeth City and brought them here. So, but we don't, you don't see that today. So it's a problem, but I think it's a county problem, and we all have to work together to find a solution to it.
Fred?
Well, I, I agree with what our land use plan has so eloquently stated, that Southern Shores is to be a low-density area. And to keep it low-density, we can't have the counter housing that would be affordable or essential in our community. And besides, our property costs are very high here. It's very hard to build. You can build affordable housing, but is it affordable in the sense that we need for workers and low-paid summer, summer help? I think it's going to be very hard for Southern Shores to do that. I agree with the other folks here. It's a county issue as far as coming up with ways to develop essential housing. I've talked to one of the commissioners, and he indicated that the county has offered some land out at Eastlake for development, but Eastlake's a long ways away. You'd have to shuttle these people in, and so that's not a viable solution. And besides, no investors want to go way out there, so it's not real good. But there's another factor that should be considered, and that is, the business owners have got to take responsibility as well. It can all be on the county and the local municipalities. And I know one business owner that has a restaurant, and he has done an exceptional job of taking care of housing for his employees. And I think that's something that other business owners should consider when they hire the summer help. And I think that would alleviate a lot of the problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
Yeah, I don't have too much to add to the, what's already been said, except, I guess, just two things. It's, I spent a little time speaking with our, our fire chief, who works with our volunteer firefighters, some of whom are quite young. And one of the challenges they have is, when they want to stay here and work here, where do they live if they don't live with mom and dad? So it's not just, it's not just a problem for our seasonal help or restaurant help, but it's, it's an issue for our law enforcement, our firefighters, our other paid professionals as well, especially on the younger end, you know, our younger folks. The only thing I can say is, if Southern Shores wants to embrace something like this idea, we would have to probably do it in, in an area that's already zoned to have more density, which means we would have to partner with the property owner that owns that, that parcel. So that conversation would have to begin. And, and I don't know, but I don't know if the town wants it or not. I, I don't know. I would have to get a sense of what, what people want. Thanks.
Thank you. On deck is George Berry.
All right, thanks. This is going to be a little bit different than some of the other questions we've had here today. So some of us here in Southern Shores work at home, and it helps to have fast, reliable internet. I see there's a few other people that work at home, too. Now, we can get reliable from the phone company. We can get almost fast from the cable company. But no one gives us fast and reliable. Is this something that you'd be willing to take on, maybe take the lead on, to help us get fast, reliable internet, become a smart city? Thanks.
Great question. It's, the internet is like that, the thing we never think about until it goes out. You know, like, kind of like the power, kind of like, you know, the way the lights stay on. I was in somebody's business office, and the internet wasn't working. This has been a week or so ago. And, you know, he was a kind of an IT guy, so I threw the question out at him. I was like, well, what's the problem? How come we keep losing internet? And he explained to me that we just have, just have one main service line. So I think what we need is some more infrastructure investment by the wireless, the internet providers. But the only way we can do that is on the county level. It's not, but the town can certainly start a conversation with the county and say, hey, we need to get some more investment, you know, because we don't, we only have one tunnel apparently coming in, and it's not enough. Because our internet goes out way more often than it ought to. Thanks very much.
Matt?
I think some, where do you live, sir?
Right here, South Shore. Chicken Hall.
I think some, some of this is really localized, because up on Waxmore Trail, we almost never lose internet, and I have consistent 100-megabit speed from Spectrum. So I mean, what I, if you're suggesting we go towards some gigabit centralized internet service, I mean, I'd be willing to discuss it, but I think the cost, cost would be pretty brutal. And as Elizabeth said, the single-feed source would be, would be difficult to overcome. One thing you might have noticed going around, around town, you'll see these utility poles being built with brown boxes attached to them and power meters. These are small cell wireless units. This is something that the legislature paved the way for about a year ago or so, and it's going to be the future broadband. So there's going to be network-on-node broadcast centers scattered throughout Dare County. And it's not fully online net. Spectrum's offering a little bit of wireless service, cell service now, if you've noticed. But it is coming. If you want to do a town initiative, I'm, I'm a tech geek. I like that kind of stuff. But I think there'd be budget priorities in battle, unfortunately. You can get them to do it for free.
Leo?
Well, I, I do work from home, but I don't use the primary one here, because it seems like they're down more than they're up. So I'm using a, I'm using a competitor, one that works very well for me and is reliable. But I would be, I think we could be willing to open some type of dialogue with the county and try to figure out if we can, but, you know, we're not a, we're not a big community down here. So trying to get some of these enhancements for IT is not, it's a challenge, but I think we should maybe, not maybe, but we should entertain trying to have some conversation about it.
Thank you. On deck is Sally Gudas.
Did you have a chance to get her? Did you want to talk about her?
Fred didn't get you.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Fred, I apologize.
Okay, thank you very much. I sympathize with your problem, because I've been an IT and an IT security person for many, many years, and I work at home as well. And matter of fact, I work for one of the largest telecommunications companies in the world, Cisco Systems. And unlike you, unreliable internet is a real problem. You can't do business if you, if you can't have internet service. Spectrum is horrible. It's always, it's always down, it seems like. CenturyLink's too slow, because you're dealing with DSL. There needs to be a way to incentivize vendors to come in here and bring new and reliable service in. And maybe the county is the answer to that. They're large enough that they could partner with these other companies and bring some good service in here. But I, I was over at the car dealership the other day, going to just get my car inspected. And the guy said, "I can't do it. We're down." I said, "What do you mean, you're down?" He said, "There's no internet." And I said, "Well, when do you think you're going to be up?" He said, "Your guess is as good as mine." And I said, "Well, that was a dumb question. I shouldn't have asked you. I know the answer. Who knows?" So I sympathize with what you're saying, and I think you brought up a good point. We probably ought to go to the county and discuss it with them. It's got to improve, because businesses rely on it.
Thank you. My apologies.
This should be an easy one. Yes or no? That's it. Some of the council meetings seem to last rather long. Will you pledge to review and read all of the pre-council meeting read-ahead material? So you're prepared before the council meeting? Yes or no?
To make up for my faux pas, Mr. Newberry.
I get to go first, huh? Thank you. Well, to answer your question, George, yes. And I'm going to qualify it one more time. You think you're going to get by that easy? I do prepare for council meetings. I spend a lot of time getting ready. I ask a lot of questions, and I try to bring the input from the citizens. A lot of times I ask questions, and I know the answer, but I want to hear the person being asked the question to answer it, so the public can hear it. But yes, I do prepare, and yes, we should. Our meetings are long, because there's a lot of good discussion. And also, if you look at the agenda, they're pretty packed. There's a lot of items we have to cover. And the issues that we're dealing with are not simple ones. So yes, I will continue to prepare.
Thank you, Fred. Leo?
Yes, I've been through this before and sat through those long meetings. And if you're prepared for it, you can kind of give a Reader's Digest version of what you're, what you're talking about. And if there's needing more information, whoever, we, we can meet one-on-one with whoever wants more information. But I think that's one of the reasons we don't have large turnout at our council meetings, is because they've gotten extended.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
Yes.
All right. Matt?
Yes.
Now he'll hold it to us.
You want, you got more?
I would add, just for a sec, some of the issues are in-depth, and the council members, that's the only opportunity they had to discuss them amongst themselves. And a potential solution would be more of a working group session periodically, you know, four or five a year. And it'd be something, if I were elected council, I'd be certainly going to explore. Because I've been pretty much every council meeting in the last two years, and they did drag on a little bit, so.
Thank you. On deck is Winston Anakin? Winston?
I'm Hawkins.
Oh, Winston, come on up.
She's Anakin, she's Scowall.
Look, we're going to, we're going to talk about this, because I know you. All right. Good evening. I'm Sally Gudas. Thank you for, for being here tonight and answering these questions. I would like to ask you, if you would be, all of you, if you would be willing to work with the General Assembly legislatively or in any other way possible to strengthen the role, the legal role, that our comprehensive land use plan can play when the town considers approval of ordinances and bearances granted in building. I've actually had to watch for, over the past several years, 2015 and then this last year, we as citizens have to be diligent to try to make sure that high-density structures actually don't get built in our town. And I've heard a couple of you refer to our wonderful low-density community and the land use plan, but it seems that that was not of great use when those projects were brought forward.
Well, I believe the council has appropriated, in this particular upcoming budget year, funds to update our land use plan. And we've had some conversation, and I've been told that the plan is a guide, it's not the actual final thing. That's what our ordinances are for. Our two houses they got in, unfortunately, if they, you know, anybody, if they meet the, the ordinances, it's tough to, to stop them, as long as they're not violating anything on it. I don't always agree with that, but sometimes that's what the state legislature will tell But sometimes that's what the state legislature will tell you, you can or can't do. So yes, I'd like to support seeing the land use plan updated. And understand there's some other changes that the legislature has come down that we'll be hearing a little bit more that may impact both land use and a comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So the, the problem is not so much the land use plan that we have, although that is an old document that definitely could use some modernization. But the problem is that the folks in Raleigh seem to think that they know better what's good for us than what we know. And that's what's happened. The folks in Raleigh have taken away local government's ability to play the role that they should play. So the primary purpose of local government is to manage density. It's a public health and safety issue. That's why we're here. You know, number one, we pick up the trash. And number two, we manage density for the protection of public health and safety. But we had, we had that taken away when they eliminated our bedroom limitation. It took a while, but we eventually have now got amendments on the books that limit occupancy, septic capacity, and also the square footage. So we hopefully have now solved the problem. That's not to say the legislature won't come back and change this again. But here's what I say. I say we, I say we take it to court, you know, because we'll win, in my opinion. Because, again, the role of local government is to protect the public health and safety. And the way we do that is we manage density. So I think, I would welcome a lawsuit because I think we'll win. I think we're on solid ground. And I'm happy to look at updating the land use plan. I think that would be something that would be good for the town and good for us as a community. Thanks. Thank you, Fred.
The land use plan provides the basis for everything else in our town. It provides the vision and has been described here several times tonight. It says we're to be a low-density community. There are lots of other aspects of the plan and I certainly encourage you to read it. Matter of fact, we did budget for an update to the plan. The town planner requested that funds be set aside to update it. But the council here recently voted not to update it. They said they didn't wanna spend the money for it. I don't think that was a wise decision. The plan's very old. It dates back to 2005. I think it was finally approved in 2011. It's way out of date. One thing the planner asked for was to update it just to get new census data in it. But there's much more to it than that. And I think it, being the basis for a lot of what we do in the town, we need to spend the time and update it. But more importantly, I would like to see it be more of a guiding doctrine for the town and maybe go into the General Assembly and petitioning them would be a good approach to, as some people say, put more teeth into it. I've heard more arguments that there is no teeth to it, it's unenforceable. Well, I don't think that should be the case. I think it should be the basis for what our ordinances, our zoning, and a lot of other things for our town. It provides the vision for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
The General Assembly adopted and the governor signed July of this year a massive overhaul of zoning authorities of local townships. And it's going to be impacting us in the future. We're gonna be needing to modify to fit our zoning to this new document. It's a, it's 160D chapter that specifically gives the rights to enact zoning and Board of Adjustments and zoning appeals. And in that document, it requires a comprehensive plan to be in place in order to enact zoning. So to function as a town, we need to have a comprehensive plan. We can always hold up our existing Kama land use plan and say, this is what it is. Let's use this. This is a comprehensive plan. I think we have an opportunity. We are now untethered from a Kama land use plan update. We don't have to have one specifically. If we don't have one, we're gonna be subject to the county. So you wanna keep some elements of the Kama land use plan to that. But more specifically, we have the opportunity, first time, to break out of that archetype of Kama and look at it more as a comprehensive plan for the way this is. And the holes that were in our current plan, we didn't define the terminology as specifically it was necessary. And that's not necessarily a land use plan. The definitions for single-family residents and things of this nature need to translate down to our individual zoning code. And that zoning code needs to have very tight definitions. I'll hand it to the planning board because they did close that in the last, I think it was April they adopted it or May the council moved it. But they did close it finally and they better attune the zoning to what it is that we were battling. But the comprehensive plan, we need the 2020 census data. We need a consultant. We need some ability to look at it. And it can be a more robust document than the Kama land use plan has historically. Usually it's, we hold it up here if it's something we like and we say it doesn't matter if it's something we don't like. But it can really be a better guiding document for the town.
Thank you. Lorelei Costa, you're on deck. Winston Hawkins, step up.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Winston.
All right, having been a resident here for a number of years and raised a young family myself, and we all like to get out here and enjoy the walking, biking, running around, chasing deer, coyotes, whatever we gotta chase, right? Well, having said that, South Dogwood Trail, most dangerous road I've ever been on at 25 miles an hour, especially passing an oncoming car and a few bicyclers along the, trying to get on the side of the curb. What is the plan for a multi-use path to go down that road? I know we'll probably have to take out a few trees in South Dogwood to get these pedestrians out of harm's way? To all of you.
Matt?
There is a walking trail. The bids were opened for South Dogwood. They were open on Thursday. The council appropriated a million dollars for that project. And the lowest bidder was about 657. I think the highest bidder was around 997. There was a mid-bidder about 897. It is, the council will be hearing it November 6th and we'll have the discussion to adopt that walking trail. There's been a lot of comments about the trees removed for that walking trail. There's been a lot of comments about how the funding was put in place for that walking trail. But it has been let to bid. The design documents are out and there are three contractors that bid on it. And they have a pretty good bid number compared to what the adjusted cost or the estimated costs were.
Thank you. Leo?
Well, I echo that bid was, opening was Thursday at way about 10 o'clock. And it was, and I'll, I'm guessing, I know that number, around 657,000, which was a hell of a lot less than the million that we had estimated. That caused some discussion and gut-wrenching. So in addition to, the town has applied to the tourism board that will probably fund about 50% of that project. So it gets down to where it's really affordable for us. And those, that grant from the tourism board on, those are performance-type grants, which means we have to complete the work and then provide them the invoices when everything's done and then they'll reimburse us. So we gotta put the money up first. But it's, it's, it's on its way. And the project that, pardon? Well, it is. I mean, now they're having to wait, the council have to approve it next month here. And then the bid. And then from there, it'll be a matter of getting it, getting the contractor to get the project started. And hopefully it'll come out like we did on the project on East Dogwood. Because I do see people using it and I've heard very good comments about that trail. So I think the South Dogwood one, I know, and I agree with you. It's unsafe as the devil over there. So activity's happening.
Thank you. Elizabeth? I look forward to walking on the trail as soon as it's completed. With my dog. Fred?
Well, Winston, I think you heard the good news. You're gonna get your walking trail. And the bids have been opened and as I understand it, it'll be an agenda item for the council at the next meeting in November. So plans are well on the way.
Glenda Keel, you're on deck.
Good evening. My name is Lorelei Costa. First, I'd like to thank all of the candidates for your willingness to serve the community. Very appreciated. Divisiveness and incivility unfortunately seem to be hallmarks at times of Southern shores politics. If elected, how would you work together positively with your fellow counselors, even those with whom you sometimes disagree? Elizabeth?
Lorelei, thank you for that question. That's kind of, you know, one of my themes. I've been on the planning board and one of the things I do as the chair, I've done it since January, is I call my planning board members on the phone regularly and have conversations with them. Now, the way the public meetings laws work, you can't, as a threesome, sit down and have a meeting because that would be not right. But I can call each planning board member and have a conversation with them, find out what's on their mind, find out, you know, what we agree on, what we don't agree on, you know, have a great conversation. And they can call each other. The same, why can't we use the same model for the town council? I mean, good decisions are gonna come about from leaders who are in communication with each other. And it's not hard. You just need to start talking to each other. You need to not make it personal. We're never gonna agree on everything, but we ought to be able to talk to each other after we're done. And, you know, I think it's something that we can easily achieve. It just takes some effort to build those relationships between council members. And I think I can do that. So that's why, that's one of the reasons I'm running. Thank you. Fred?
I don't know if the perception of incivility is always the case. I think a lot of times we have meetings and we disagree. And disagreement, to me, is not incivility. I think it's everyone's right to speak for themselves, freedom of speech. They speak for the people in the community and they're bringing their skills and their experience to make good points, although they may not always be the popular points. I know in this past council, the past four years, I've been one of the members that's been in the minority on the votes. There've been a lot of three to two votes. And just because I don't vote with the majority doesn't mean that I'm being incivil, uncivil. It means that I'm trying to present a different perspective. I'm coming up with facts that haven't been discussed before. And I think it's critical that we have that open dialogue and have the ability to do that and have patience from not only other members of the council, but the public as well. We're all here for the common good of Southern shores. And in order to do that, we must bring different perspectives. And I know I try to get along with people. I wanna get along with people. I'm on other boards in the county. And the same applies there. We come up with different ideas. They're not always the popular ones, but they should be considered. And I don't think it should be considered uncivil.
Thank you. Matt?
Municipal boards are nonpartisan specifically for this purpose. And I would echo what Elizabeth says, that talking to council members individually on issues, especially hot-topic issues, before the board meeting is gonna be critical to that. In the past several years, she and I, the planning board, we've coordinated off-site quite a bit on zoning issues. I've talked to Fred on zoning issues. Fortunately, Leo, I haven't grabbed you to the side yet. But I mean, I don't think there's anybody up here that probably would get into the bearing of teeth we might have become accustomed to. But I mean, I think that is really the key to the new council, is working together. And some of that's behind the scenes, some of it might be in public forums and smaller working groups. I mean, it's tough to have it all out on major issues over a four-hour period in the evening. And it's tough to be in a voting minority sometimes, I think, and feel like the constituents that you're hearing from aren't being representative. It just comes to us all talking to each other ultimately. That would be my goal.
Thank you. Leo?
Well, when you're working with, you know, like the council, and I've worked on other boards as well, there always going to be disagreement. But let's keep it to, disagreement needs to be with the issue that you've got. Unfortunately, I think sometimes it gets, it can get personal. And that's where things go astray and the uncivil liberty comes out in it. I know everybody likes to rely on emails. Well, sometimes those e-mails can get pretty vicious. That gets people upset. And every now and then, we gotta put some of this media like that aside and pick up the phone and talk to each other. Granted, we can't talk in any more than one-on-one or two, not three, because that violates the open meeting law. But I've always been a proponent of trying to work with whoever I'm with. You don't always have to agree. But you know, at the end of the day, you can shake hands and still be friends and not ignore each other. So my goal would be, if I'm elected, is to try to bring that to the board. Because I worked with the tourism board and if you wanna see some diversity, just work with that group. And, but at the end of the day, we always walked out shaking hands and we didn't make it personal.
Very good. Thank you. On deck is Lilius Morrison. Hey, you guys are doing a really good job. Anybody need like a seventh inning stretch break? Hands up, hands down, stand up, get the, get the bottom half moving. We're good? Oh, no, don't leave! Not to leave! Don't leave! Here you go. Oh, God, I just opened the floodgates. Come on up.
Everybody's been here a long time.
I'm Glenda Keel and I have a question for Matt Neal. And Matt, I'm not picking on you. As a matter of fact, I'm very pleased to see someone from the younger generation run for the board. After all, you can run for president at the age of 35, so you certainly should be able to run for Southern Shores Town Council. My question is, how will you assure that your position as president of the Home Builders' Association does not represent a conflict of interest when issues related to regulations on home construction arise?
I will not be president of the Home Builders' Association when I take office. But, but to follow that up, this is something that's come up a little bit. And I think there's a misunderstanding about what the Home Builders' Association is. And I'll go back a little bit of history. Carpenters Hall in Philadelphia was a carpenters' union, started in 1768. When the moderate legislature in Philadelphia didn't let our Continental Congress meet in their building, they went to Carpenters Hall. There's been an interplay between government and trade associations since the dawn of time. David Stick helped found Obar, so the Outer Banks Association of Realtors. These organizations are not some diabolical development, greedy, it's a bunch of builders. Sometimes we yell at each other. We have a mutual health, workman's comp policy that we can sign on to. And often, most of the, I guess to go back to the conflict of interest, if I were, if I were adjudicating on a conditional use permit for a client, because I was doing a site plan and we were building a commercial building, that's a conflict of interest. If I'm working with Currituck County on a dune protection ordinance or an ag set on a stormwater ordinance, I don't see that as a conflict for the town. I see it as something that's better for the town because it broadens my horizon, my perspective, and brings that knowledge back to this town so that we can better tackle some of these issues. And I'll just end by, when we, when we had a large home, we had a deficit of policy to handle with large home development and after 2015. It was the Home Builders' Association that put forth the occupancy and use. Duck had a septic capacity cap and it did not work. You couldn't just cap something at septic capacity because there's ways to cheat it. It was the Home Builders' Association that proffered and put forth the concept of separating it by use and the advertisement of that use. And that is what we have on the books today. And that is what has curtailed large home development. So I mean, I don't see it as a conflict. I see it as a benefit.
Thank you.
Mr. Newberry, during your
Mr. Newberry, during your time as councillor, you have advocated that the town develop a five-year financial plan to show how capital projects will impact taxpayers. If reelected, will you continue to advocate for a five-year financial plan?
Yes, I get the answer to that. Most definitely, yes. I've been a proponent of long-term planning in the town from the day I even thought about running for council. In the past, I've held positions in the government and also in the private sector where planning, especially long-term planning, coupled with budgets are absolutely critical. You can't manage organizations in the long run without these plans. I think the town's been pretty lucky so far. Most of the planning has been kind of just in time and just happened to have funds in the undesignated fund to finance these projects that pop up. But I think the town should be more insightful and plan these projects for the future. As example, we've known about beach nourishment issues for years and years. We've known about cut-through traffic for a long time. But we have never developed what I would consider a viable plan and a budget to support that. And if I'm reelected, I'm gonna keep pushing for that. And hopefully, I can, along with others, convince the council. We've got to sit down and get public input and come up with projects and a plan and a budget to support them so that we don't become shorthanded and we have to raise taxes. That's the last thing I would like to do. I would like to have good budgets that we can count on to finance these critical projects for the town.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, Susan Deneen and Ursula Bateman, come on up. Bless you.
Bless you.
Thank you. Hi, this question is for Leo Holland. When you were on the council, what do you feel your biggest accomplishment was and that you're most proud of? And what is one decision that you might have regretted during that time? Thank you.
Well, a couple of the things was the one I felt because I was part of the Pelican Watch Project. I thought that was a good accomplishment. And also, the stormwater program up in Dogwood and 12. Worked with the mayor at that time and we got that put together. Took a little effort. But I was a part of that group that worked on it. Probably the thing I would say that I would have liked to have done better would have been to have a long, a five-year plan that Fred talks about. And we talked about it as a council. But I think that's a council issue and it should be a council member, whether it's one person or two of that council, should be working with our staff to develop it. It's not the staff develops it, the council develops it. And that's one I think I could have done a better job on.
First, I just wanna thank you all for running a tough job, and you're all doing great tonight. It's for all four of you. Our town manager, Peter Rusko, just retired last month. So, I was wondering, what process do you think we should go forward with to fill the opening?
Fred?
I strongly believe that the position should be advertised to the public. We have decided on the council to engage a recruiter to go out and advertise this position, not only locally, but more, I would think, regionally and maybe even nationally, and bring the best talent that we can find to fill this position. It's a highly desirable position. It's a lot, it takes, it'll take a lot of work and it's gonna be a person that's really motivated. And we should find the best we can. If we can find someone locally, that would be great. But I don't think that should be a primary requirement. I think the qualifications are key and those requirements are what we need to put the emphasis on and bring in some good people.
Thank you. Matt?
I think I would largely echo what Fred said. We need to advertise. I think there's been discussion about having a consultant come in and try to locate a town manager for us. I wouldn't discount the deputy town manager and interim town manager. I think he deserves a shot at the project. He knows our culture. He knows our town very well. He's understood the budget priorities and he's worked with the finance officer thus far to meet our budget priorities. But in all fairness, it should be open and a consultant could be engaged to find somebody. Circle back to who we got, that's one thing, but at least we gave it a shot to look somebody. I do think it's a unique position filling town manager in this town. We have a very, as I said, civically active community and a very engaged community. And the town manager would have to have a specific set of qualities to kind of handle that. And having somebody that's already been a little bit adjusted to that is, gives me a little bit of a warmth. But, I mean, it's seeing who's out there. I agree with Fred. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Jim Groff, you're on deck. Elizabeth?
Thanks for that question because I really think that this is probably one of the most important things that this next council will do, if not the most important. Because the town manager is the face of our town. Let's face it. It's the town manager and the mayor. The town manager, you know, is critical to our relationships with other towns and our relationships with the county. And so, the person that we choose to do this work for...
Don't fall off. Don't fall off a chair.
Needs to be the right guy or gal. And so therefore, I do think we need to hire a consultant. We need to look at, you know, however many applications we can, 75 to 100, and then, you know, whittle down to a smaller group, do phone, Skype interviews, and then do in-person interviews. It needs to be a thorough documented process because we want the best person for the job. It is a critical part of who we are as the town of Southern Shores.
Thank you. Leo?
I agree that we need to use a consultant. They have a much broader database of who to go look for because they are critical to how the town runs because of the way our structure is. And the person that comes here is gonna be following some big shoes because Peter did an excellent job of managing the town and keeping it in order. And it's a challenging job. I don't know if I'd want it, but it needs to be somebody that's got experience, not only can relate with the other municipalities, with the county, but also be able to relate at the state level as well, at the state legislature and with the local state legislators. Because they can help influence a lot of activity that will have impact not only as a town, but as us as residents. So, that's why I'm in favor of using a consultant. And that's what they do. They're the experts. We're not.
Thank you. Kevin Vipavetz, you're on deck.
Good evening. I'm Jim Groff. What interactions have you, each of you, had with the town's manager, the town manager and the staff?
Leo?
Well, I have, I interact pretty well with them. When I was on the council, I was in there probably a couple times a month or more to sit down and learn what they were doing and was there something I could be doing to help them. And so, I enjoyed a very good relationship with them. And to me, it's just part of being a council member. You need to have a relationship. They're the people that you see first. When you come to the town hall, you aren't gonna see many council members hanging around there. It's our staff and the town manager. And you, as a council member, should have a working relationship with them. So, you understand what they're doing and maybe they can help you do a better job yourself.
Elizabeth?
So, one of the benefits of being on the planning board is I've been able to have interaction with staff, primarily Wes and Dabney, but to a lesser extent Sheila and Cynthia and just recently Bonnie. I met with Peter before he left. I've known Peter for a number of years. And so, I do think, I agree with Leo that I think if you're gonna be an effective councilperson, you need to have good relationships with the staff. In addition to what I said before about the town manager being the face of the town and the mayor, the staff greets the public every day in our town office. They take care of problems when we call. They take care of problems when we email. So, yeah, a councilperson needs to have a really good relationship with staff and with our new town manager. I do think it's a critical part of being, you know, elected official here in town.
Matt?
I've known Wes, Dabney and Buddy, who's a building inspector, for a long time. That goes with the territory of being a builder. I've recently interfaced with Peter over the last two years quite a bit. He's no longer with us. I've recently met with Bonnie and gotten to know Sheila and Cynthia a little bit just through public interactions. I don't know the David Bradley and some of the public works people. And I would like to know them better. But I think to answer the question, you know, if I have a plumbing subcontractor on my job site, every single plumber that he sends, I know their name. I know what they're about. I know what their pros and cons are. And see the same way, it's not quite the same interaction with staff. You have to get to know them on a personal level and know where they might succeed best. And where, you know, Dabney and Wes have taught me a ton over the years. If I got a camera questioned in another town, I'll come talk to Dabney, get her to pull that book out and walk me through it and try to explain it to me. So, I mean, sometimes your best education comes from the staff. It's always been my policy with anybody I work with. Thank you.
Fred?
I agree with Matt. Wes is a terrific resource. I've interacted with him a lot here recently and he's always very eager to get answers. And the nice thing I like about Wes, he's very responsive. You hear from him very quickly. I've had a lot of interaction with Sheila. She's, no doubt, does a good job. Some interaction with Bonnie with some financial matters. But for our town manager, that's gonna be the key person, I think, that all of us really need to interact with. And it needs to be a manager that has open doors for the council, but the public as well. And I think one of the attributes that the town manager should have is to reach out to the council and query them to see how his staff can assist them in a lot of the initiatives that they're trying to pursue. So, yeah, the interaction is good.
I got everybody ready? Just checking.
Yeah, this question's for all the candidates. What is your vision for Southern Shores?
Matt?
These are two-minute answers. How do I snatch this? My vision for Southern Shores is the vision of the town that I grew up in and the town that I know wholeheartedly. My father's home has been an anchor for my family and for many of his brothers, for most of our family for many generations, and started with my grandfather. And it's a sense of community. It's a sense of proximity to people. It's a sense of walking down the street, knowing the cars that are passing. You know who's driving them, watching people walk their dogs. It's a sense of being able to get to the sound quickly. These are all sort of ethereal concepts, but that's what's been ingrained on me. That's what I brought my family back to and where I wanna raise them and let them have the same experience. Now, when we get in the minutia of development issues and budget issues, that's where the longer answer comes in. But the snapshot, and by no means do I wanna roll the bridge, roll it back and stop everything and mothball the town because that's not forward progress either. But it's really the sense of community that I grew up with. It's using the civic association's properties, using the boat ramps, using the sounds and the beach. And it's a beautiful place to live. We'd like to work to preserve it.
Thank you. Fred?
I agree with Matt in a lot of ways. That's the reason we're here in Southern Shores. It's a unique community. There's no other community like it on the Outer Banks. And I know my wife and I have invested in property here and we've decided to make it our home because we like the town. We like the small-town atmosphere. We love the ambiance here. But yet, at the same time, we wanna be progressive. We don't wanna go backwards in time. We want to have modern conveniences like everybody else. But yet, we've got to preserve the ambiance and make it a place also for visitors to wanna come. That's why we're here and why a lot of you, I'm sure, are here. You visited it, oh, years and years ago and you went back and forth from your home, wherever it was, and made this a top vacation spot for yourself. And you're probably like us. You decided one day, man, I really like this place. I wanna, I wanna make it more permanent and make it my residence. And that's what we've done. And I would like to see it continue as a very unique community and the nice place it is to live. And there are a lot of nice people here. And it's, and I guess I've been able to realize it more going door to door and talking to you and, you know, hearing some of the things you're not too happy with and what we can do to make it better. But all in all, it's been a great experience here and I'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Leo?
Well, I like to maintain the ambience that we're talking about, the friendliness of the town and the small-town atmosphere. Coming here from Baltimore and Cary, it's a godsend to not have to have, even though we fuss about traffic, but that traffic is a lot different. And, but we still got to maintain the image of the town and be more outgoing and more friendly. That's what I wanna see us maintain and actually improve on that. I think we've got some good people here. There's gonna be days that you're frustrated with town council and whatever. But that, we can't get upset with each other. We can get upset with each other, but we gotta talk to each other. And I know the neighbors and neighbors know me and I've met a lot of other people because of the activities I've been in. So, and we need to have that friendly openness so we do get visitors here. Because sometimes they'll become residents just like we did. So, that's what I wanna maintain as a vision.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
It's a great question. Thank you very much. Just a couple of ideas. I think there's some, I think there's some improvement to be made between the relationship between the town and the civic associations. And I'd like to try to think that we could work on that. So, that would be one idea to at least kick around. Another idea, and this is, I'm gonna just steal it because it was from a lady whose door I knocked on and lives over on the avenue. It was a couple weeks ago. But she thinks, she had the idea of, let's come up with some kind of signature community event, you know? And she compared it to, say, the Duck Jazz Festival. Last weekend, Tommy and I went to the Throwdown, which is on the beachfront, which is a wonderful, wonderful community activity. And it was extremely well-attended. But something along those lines where we could, again, echoing some of the things that the folks have said up here, just build on the sense of community. I just think that that's the reason that we all live here. We love this place. And we want to see it thrive. And I think building community, you know, would help us to do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, we'll hear our candidates' closing remarks. Again, we're going in reverse order from the opening remarks, so we'll start with Fred Newberry.
Well, first of all, I wanna thank the League of Women Voters for allowing us the opportunity to answer your questions. opportunity to answer your questions and provide our views on the issues. It's been great. I believe I'm very well-qualified to serve you. I've served you for the past four years on the town council, two of which I was mayor pro temp. I have the education and other government experience managing large programs and budgets, which is directly applicable for addressing town issues. In addition to community service for citizens of Southern Shores, I've served the community for four years in a county organization. I was appointed in 2015 by the Dare County Board of Commissioners to serve on the Dare County Airport Authority. And currently, I'm vice chairman of that authority. Most importantly, I have a desire as a concerned citizen to represent you and ensure your voice is heard and that your input is considered in all council actions, whether it's cut-through traffic, beach nourishment, stormwater management, or maintaining our streets. I want the town to be progressive, but as we've been saying, I want to preserve the ambiance. I want citizens' input in developing long-term plans with supporting budgets. And I want to be sure that tax dollars are spent wisely and that the town governments run efficiently and our taxpayers get their full benefit of our tax dollar. And I don't want to raise taxes. Thank you and please vote for Fred Newberry.
Thank you, Fred. Leo Holland?
Okay, again, I want to thank everybody for coming. It was nice to see a large crowd and some, and people interested in your potential leaders for the next four years. I'm a candidate seeking to return to office because I think the citizens of Southern Shores deserve a good government and a town council which its members seek to work together for the common good of the town. As a council member, I will strive to make my decisions for the best interest of all citizens of the town. My experience as a previous council member and my broad experience in civic managers as a resident of the town for many years makes me confident in my ability to again serve on the council and bring civility, common sense, and practicality to its deliberations. Should the residents of Southern Shores elect to return me to council, I look forward to working with the mayor, other elected council members on town policy matters when we take office in December. Also look forward to working with the competent and professional management staff that run our town's day-to-day operations. And I would like to close with a quote from Henry Ford that not only pertains to the council, but to our town as a whole. "Coming together is beginning. Keeping together is progress. And working together is success." Please vote November 5th and I ask that you consider voting for me.
Thank you so much. Elizabeth Maury?
Thanks, Colleen.
I had a 50/50 shot.
Yeah, well done. This has been an exhausting and fascinating process tonight, y'all. Thanks so much for coming, thanks for listening, thanks to all the volunteers from the League. You guys are awesome. You know, I'd like to think of myself as an independent thinker. I like to think of myself as an active listener. I do seek to build consensus. I do that by talking to as many people as I can and trying to get as many viewpoints as I can. I'm not afraid to tackle hard issues. We've certainly had a slew of them here lately. And we've got some really, really big items to contend with looking to the future. So I would like to ask you to vote for me. I think I can serve you because I'm good at listening and I don't come in with any sort of predetermined agenda. I just want what's best for the town because I really like where I live. And everybody I've talked to lately, that's what they tell me too. So it's kind of been fun and I'm looking forward to talking to the rest of the town between now and November the 5th. You'll see me around. Thanks and I hope you'll consider voting for me. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Matt Neal?
Thank you all for coming this evening. I appreciate the League of Women's Voters for putting this on for us. I'm going to be pretty brief here because I don't have any really prepared remarks. This is sort of the last thing I expected myself to be doing, you know, six, seven months ago. People have been kind of, you should run for county. No, I don't want any part of that, I've got two young kids, running a business. As I've advocated for policies within the town over the last several years, I've really become in tune with what's happening on the development side and I've really felt like there's been something that I have there to offer. And after a lot of discussions with my wife and a little bit of struggling, I mean, you're talking, looking at a guy who doesn't have a Facebook page and here I am, putting myself out here. So it's a little awkward. I mean, I've actually really enjoyed the door knocking much more than I thought I ever would. And I've been enjoying getting to know all of you. And I think I have a lot to offer the town. And I'm a research nut, I like these issues, I grew up here, I've got two kids here, I mean, I'm invested in this. I would ask for your vote. If you want to know more about me, go to electmattneal.com, go to my Facebook page, you know, call me up, find me. I live on Wax Myrtle. Please vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Candidates, we thank you for your participation and for the voters for attending this evening. We'd also like to thank Sheila Kane, the town clerk, and the town of Southern Shores for the use of their meeting room, and Cory Godwin for videotaping this event. We will post the video on our website, l w v dare.org, on our YouTube page, and Dare County Current TV channel. Broadcast information is available on the back table if you're interested. This year, we have asked all candidates to participate in the League's online voter guide called vote411.org. This is a one-stop-shop website that voters may access on their phone or on their PC. You key in your address and you can view candidate information, their philosophy statement, social media links, and their responses to questions that we posed. We ask that you check that out. I could just yell, you want me to just talk really loud? Okay, I can definitely do that. Future scheduled forums, if you're interested, Kill Double Hills is tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at Town Hall. Manio is Wednesday, October 9th at 7:00 PM in the Commissioner's Meeting Room. And in Kitty Hawk, since there's no opposition, we're going to have a candidate reception and that will be at 2:00 PM in the Smith Meeting Room. Remember, the last day to register to vote is Friday, October 11th. Registration forms are on the table in the back if you need one. Early voting begins Wednesday, October 16th through November 1st in two locations. You can go to the Dare County Board of Elections Office in Manio and Kill Double Hills Town Hall. Early voting is available Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, and Saturday, October 19th, from 8:30 to 2:00 PM. Of course, Election Day is November 5th. We encourage you to join us as we strive to make democracy work. League of Women Voters membership applications are also on the table in the back. We thank you so much for coming and I hope you have a great evening.